I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 7th, 2023 Papillion City Council meeting order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mr. Sunday. Sorry, Mr. Sunday. Mom Guard, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight. One, I'd like to invite Mr. Simmons up. Where do you go?
Over there. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
So I think people know Michael, Mike, Mikey, works in the Parks Department for Tony. And he had the honor of being recognized at the county board meeting today as a veteran of the year for Sarpy County. And so we've got a proclamation to go along with that as well. Whereas Michael Simmons honorably served in the United States Army from 2009 until 2013. Whereas shortly after the start of his military career, Michael was deployed to Barash, Iraq for Operation Iraqi Freedom. He was severely wounded in an IED blast on February 14, 2010. However, despite his injuries, he volunteered to help other veterans, demonstrating his selflessness and commitment to service. Whereas Michael was awarded the Purple Heart on January 2011 for the sacrifices he made for his country. The Purple Heart is a prestigious award that is a symbol of his courage, determination, and patriotism. Whereas after separating from the Army in 2013, Michael and his family moved to Sarpy County. He completed his associate degree in horticulture from Metropolitan Community College and began his employment with the City of Papillion August 13, 2013. Whereas Michael volunteers his time helping other veterans in the community, not only through the Bellevue University Veteran Service Center, but also with suicide prevention through the Veterans Resident Network. Michael also was an Eagle Scout and helps with Eagle Scout projects in Papillion. Whereas Michael married his wife Alyssa in 2011. They have two children, a daughter Claire and a son Emmett. Whereas the City of Papillion, Nebraska is a proud veteran community and holds a deep appreciation for the courage and dedication of the United States Armed Forces and is honored to have Michael as an employee. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation recognizing and honoring Michael Simmons for his years of service in the military and as an integral part of the City of Papillion Parks Department. Please join me in expressing our deepest appreciation to Michael, who has bravely defended our freedoms. Let us honor him for his sacrifices and show him the respect and support he has earned.
Kids are proud. Then we also have another presentation. I'd like to invite Russ Zeeb up, PVFD, Inc., and I think Jackie and some others. They've got a... One of the things that PVFD, Inc. does, I'm sure they'll talk about it, is do some fundraisers and donate AEDs around the community. And so they've got a donation that they want to make tonight.
Thank you. Chief's coming up. Yep, everybody coming up. Good. You want to start, Rob?
Sure, I'll start.
Mayor, City Council, I'm very thankful for private public organizations such as PFVD, Inc. When I was taking the position of Fire Chief, I got to meet a lot of people and Russ Zeeb was one of them. And that conversation, he let me know about his passion for providing these defibrillators. And I remembered that. And I came to a staff meeting one day and Carrie Severson says, hey, I need an AED from you. She's pointing to me and I'm like, well, there's some on the medic unit. You can borrow those. But not realizing she wanted one in the building here. And so I reached out to Russ and he was very much excited about providing an AED. So I'm very thankful. So from the City of Papillion, Papillion Fire Department, Lisa, thank you. Russ, thank you. And say a few words.
I will. Thank you. Evening, everybody. I told this story the last time I think I was here, but the last time I was in this room, I was standing in front of the bench, pleading my soul to the judge for stupid mistake I made when this was the courtroom. But really, here's what we're doing. He's 100% right in what he said. We had coffee. We discussed this. It was kind of like, what does PVFD do? You know, we donate AEDs and stuff like that. And a few weeks later, you know, an email or a text came across and said, you bet, we'd be happy to do it. And I think at the same time, I'm going to let Lisa do that. At the same time, we have a second one for the city too, that she's been working on for one of the rec areas and that. But we've probably put... I meant to get my figures out today, but I think we're right about 100 AEDs that we've put out in the community. We've put them in all the schools and the school districts, in the fire district, which included some of Springfield, Platteville, some of the Catholic archdiocese, and some of the Bellevue schools. So you know, we've done that. Put them in a lot of churches, a lot of daycares. I think Mayor, you were with us on one of the daycares we put in several years ago. And we just try to do it when there's a need. And usually, the only thing we weigh on there is if it's a need where we can fund the whole thing or we can fund half of it, and the group fund the other half. We were lucky on this one here is we were able to fund both of them for the city. So it's one of those deals. I hope you hang it on the wall on the cabinet and you never have to use it. But you know, it's something that we need to know. Going back in time, we started this program after a young girl died in Gretna at a basketball game and there was no AED. And she passed away from her illness. So that's when we started doing it. So thank you. I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Russ. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lisa Beacom. I took over Ray's spot as president of PVFD, Inc. So I'm very new at this. I was hoping he would be on vacation instead of what happened sadly. But I'm very proud. I've been on the PVFD since the 21. And of course, I came from work. So I really do and have seen these work. In fact, my brother-in-law was at the Green Bay Packers game, came out, went down, someone found him, took him to the stadium, shocked him three times. He was 54. He lived and he walked out like four days later. This saved his life. So these are very, very important. And we want this to go at the softball baseball field down by the landing because they're the next one. We've got all the baseball fields also. Because this, if someone gets hit in the chest, like in the baseball, if you don't have this there, within seconds, that child will not live. So they are very important all around. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And just real quick, clarifying, there are two of them back here. We didn't drag them all up here, but there are two with lockheed cabinets and everything else. I think the chief's going to take care of getting them distributed. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.
Ms. Powers, administrates report.
Hey, Mikey, don't leave too quick. I just want to again give you another big congratulations. Your city family is very proud of you. And you're humble and you don't share much of your sacrifices, but just know that we all appreciate, greatly appreciate your services and everything you've done. And we're proud. We get to serve alongside you every day in your civilian role. So thank you. Yep, thanks. Now you can go. It was another great turnout for the annual Halloween Safe Night at South High School on October 26. Thank you to everyone who made it a great community event. I know my family really enjoyed it. If you haven't already, be sure to check out the cool new features at Seventh Street Park. There are two new movement games that were added to the park last week. One is accessible, but both are for all ages. So even adults can have fun at this park. So if you haven't, again, try to check that out. And then Winter Wonderland is quickly approaching. I probably don't need to remind you guys of that. You see it when you go down the street and you see our crews working. Staff from most all the city departments are continuing their hard work to get everything finalized for that. And again, just another shout out, a big thank you to all of our city crews and the Papillion Community Foundation. It really is a city-community event. This upcoming Saturday, November 11, there will be a special Veterans Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Park. The city and American Legion Post 32 will be dedicating a new Purple Heart memorial and celebrating Papillion's addition to the Purple Heart Trail. As a community, we are proud to receive this honor. And please try to attend if you can, anyone in the community. And then along those lines, just a reminder that City Hall and City Offices will be closed on Friday, November 10 in observation of Veterans Day. Thank you to everyone who has served for their sacrifices. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Gaines? Second by Mr. Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
7808.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 2015, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Is there a councilman who will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 2013, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to MU Mixed Use R4 Multi-Family Residential and RE Residential Estates for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 7, Section 12 Township 13 North Range 12 East of the 6B. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of South 72nd Street and Cape Heart Road, the applicant's Gene Graves, Oakleaf Phases 2 through 5. It's a public meeting. I'll open it. Proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, in this case, Gene Graves. But also with me tonight is Gene Graves. With me also is Brett Shaw, the Foley Shaw, the consulting engineers on this particular project. And then we have Jake Hoppy and Ben Coons of Hoppy Development. They're developing a large portion of what is before you tonight. So I just kind of wanted to give you a rundown of kind of where we've been and where we are. If you recall, some time ago, we had the Phase 1 of Oakleaf approved. That's this area in gray here. You see that? It's kind of hard to see on the screen, but essentially, it's, this is Phase 1. If you recall, this is a very large development on the southeast corner of 72nd and Cape Heart. So the total area is 430 acres. If you recall, Phase 1 was 171 acres. That's already been preliminarily platted, finally platted, and is in the process of having public infrastructure installed through the SID. What we're here talking about tonight, and that was 171 acres, what we're talking about tonight is this area here on the hard corner of 72nd and Cape Heart. This is the mixed-use area. It's about 56 acres. And it's being rezoned, but also kind of into different zones. And so you'll see how there's Zone 1, that's kind of on the outer boundary. And then you have Zone 2 and Zone 3 here, which is the multifamily residential part of this mixed-use area. And then what we're showing is 11 lots on the exterior, kind of the pad sites. They're just your traditional commercial mixed-use pad sites with, you know, various uses that are permitted in the mixed-use area. We're showing a retirement lot down here in this corner that's about five acres. So that's really the long and short of that part of it. Gene Graves is retaining the 11 lots on the exterior. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jake Hoppy, who is going to really talk about the way they develop the multifamily, which is kind of a missing middle, if you will, type housing with different housing options and types. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jake and let you go.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor Black.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Jake Hoppy, 301 South 57th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Had to think about it for a second. We're really excited to be before you today and appreciate the time this evening. And sorry for maybe spending a little more time than we normally would on a development like this. But we, I'm just going to go through a quick introduction of who we are and then get right into some of the work that we've been putting together on this development. Hoppy Development is a vertically-integrated real estate development firm that really exclusively focuses on affordable housing. We haven't done any work in Omaha. We do considerable amount of work in Lincoln and out west, 300 to 400 units a year. We have a development team, construction team. And then we stick around through the management of the projects and have really long-term commitments that were associated with these projects. And we've really focused on innovating within different financing programs to be able to deliver affordable housing that is uniquely responsive to some of the communities where we work. And I think you're going to see that, I hope, tonight in what we talk about. We're building off some precedent work in both Lincoln and Fremont. Fremont is a little bit smaller site. It's 34 acres, about 400 units. But it was kind of a first example of us integrating both affordable housing directly with market rate housing into a space that's really sharing all of the same common amenities. In the space, we have both rental and ownership opportunities. And what we layer onto it is just the ability to provide access to families that would normally not get to live in a development like this. So there's folks here who are 30% of area meeting income for Fremont. We have a very similar development and we're about a third through that in Fremont. We have a very similar development in Lincoln. We bought about 30 acres south of a community church that was kind of in a suburb or in a cornfield. They sold us their adjacent land. So it's about a 50-acre entire development. So we've kind of taken a church that was off on the periphery of town and put it within a neighborhood. Again, it's going to be about a third affordable housing, about 2/3 market rate housing, with both ownership and rental opportunities. This concept that we developed got the attention of the Omaha Community Foundation and specifically their Front Porch Initiative, which is an initiative for the greater Omaha area of accelerating affordable housing development. And specifically, what they were interested in is some of the programmatic outcomes that can come from bringing affordable housing into an area of really high economic growth and strong supportive environments for children, which is exactly what we have in Papillion. So they were interested in helping support us in identifying a large-scale mixed-income, mixed-product neighborhood. We can think of it as kind of the concept of being able to comprehensively design that neighborhood or taking some of the best of urban design, which you guys actually have some very good examples of in Papillion, but actually imbuing the affordability as a core component to that. So you think of sort of Prairie Queen, which has a lot of different housing typologies, a very unique mix of housing. You'll see some of that reflected tonight. But what you'll additionally see is, you know, true levels of affordability to provide access for some additional families. And then both the opportunity for home purchase and affordable home ownership as well as rental. This site and this area in Papillion is very unique. The specific zip code where this is located is an area that brings more resources for affordable housing. It's called a difficult-to-develop area, kind of an arcane designation. There's only one in the state, but it helps us get the resources we need to do some of the work that we're talking about. It's in a very high area for childhood opportunity, which is what we are seeking out in collaboration with the Omaha Community Foundation. And then close to employment centers, which historically have not had the same level. Oh, this is a similar version of this slide. I'll skip over that. So anyway, I'll try and be more brief. My team knows I'm not usually the shortest at the speaking lectern. But I do think what we're doing here is very unique and cool. And so I did want to spend a few minutes on it. This is the residential design that you see here. What you're going to see is a real range of different housing types from sort of traditional three-story multifamily down to attached, single-family sort of row home typology, really spread and supported by a variety of projects. I'm going to turn it over to Ben to talk about some of the design elements and we'll try and be more brief. I appreciate it.
Ben Coons, 5631 South 48th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. As Jake mentioned, you know, this is really kind of an overall look. And just to orient you here, we've got Cape Heart Road along this side, on the left side of the image, 72nd Street on the right side. If you look beyond the neighborhood towards the back is kind of where the larger single-family portion of this development previously mentioned is, as well as a future school site down to the southeast. You can see here is some of this perimeter, commercial edge. And as we've planned this, the buildings, the multifamily and residential buildings kind of step down and transition. So we've got a more higher density, higher intensity edge along the commercial. And as we step into this neighborhood, it starts to step down in height and intensity until you meet kind of the larger single-family neighborhood in the school. And then overall, this is really organized around kind of a central spine that is both a pedestrian and greenway. And then that flows from the school up through the middle and kind of lands in this, what we're calling a central kind of community plaza and micro-commercial area. So just to highlight a few of the kind of specific subprojects that we've already identified in yellow and orange here are two different projects we'll get into. But here, we're looking at affordable senior row housing. In the orange, we're looking at affordable family row housing. In red here is some of the for-sale product, which is a row house style product. There's portions of that that's targeting kind of middle-income buyers as well as lower-income buyers in a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And in blue, funding that we've not received yet but are in the works on is another portion of this that's more of a standard-looking kind of multifamily in terms of its one- and two-bedroom type. And just really quickly, kind of describing some of those things, we've got almost 120 units here that are already funded for various levels of affordability, including 34 of those for family affordable, 34 for senior affordable, and 45 units of for-sale housing of various affordability levels. And as I mentioned, we're in the process for an additional 130 units in the process of funding now. So just to delve into some more of these specifics on this, I had mentioned the kind of central community plaza. We really think this is a great opportunity for neighborhood identity and neighborhood community development. This could play host to a number of things from casual kind of independent usage to more organized farmers markets. And it also becomes a platform and central point for this micro-commercial concept we have, which might serve a variety of folks, including, you know, a small ice cream shop, say a small, you know, boutique, retail, other types of things of that nature. In addition, here's some images that gives a little character to how we might activate that space. We're really excited about its potential. Another area, this is one of the larger multifamily typologies we've penciled in. You know, this is largely one- and two-bedroom units and kind of a three-story multifamily typology. You know, a tenant profile we might see here on one of the affordable projects is, you know, a first-year teacher who maybe is teaching at the new school down the hill from this. We think it's really critical for, you know, community members and servants to have affordable housing near where they work. Another example here, these are images of what some, you know, affordable row housing and market rate row housing might look like. Go ahead. This also describes those. These are a little bit more specific to what we're proposing. But they range in scale from two to three stories and three to four bedrooms. And really, when you think about the tenant profile that we might see in these units, we're excited to serve kind of, you know, families. And a lot of times in these affordable projects, the tenants that qualify tend to be single-income. So you may see like a single mother with kids. And that's really the type of tenant this product will serve. Additionally, we have got a typology of senior row homes. These are one- and two-stories and, you know, are all two-bedroom units. These might serve, for example, you know, a fixed-income retired couple, really in need of, you know, wanting to stay local but kind of in need of an affordable option. And lastly, these are the proposed for-sale row homes. They're all two-story, attached garage. And these again range from three to four bedrooms and are targeting multiple areas of affordability with our Habitat for Humanity partnership. And with that, if there's any questions, we'll open it up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mom Guard.
Well, this might be just too basic of a question, but since this is a revision of the approved preliminary plat, what is triggering the request for the revision?
Well, the preliminary plat that was originally approved was really basic. I mean, this revised preliminary plat is really to address the lots that are being subdivided here. So I mean, all these lots are being created really to allow for this particular development. So those buildings that need to sit on their own individual lot, you couldn't just, what we had, laying that site plan down wouldn't work because you'd have buildings crossing over lot lines and everything else. So this, now that we have an actual project, is to revise the preliminary plat to conform to what is going to be ultimately the site plan and the ownership structure and everything else. So revised preliminary plats are pretty commonplace.
Yeah. I generally like what you're bringing in. I guess I'd like to learn, you know, for the future and for other developers, why was this not in the first one, the approved one, and why does it come forward now? How did you get the project?
Well, this was, again, 430 acres, right? So we were required to preliminarily plat the entirety, right? And we knew it was a phased development. In the original preliminary plat and the original final plat of Phase 1, we set forth the fact that it would be probably rezoned and platted into four different phases. This is just the second phase of those. There may very well be another revised preliminary plat on one of these other phases of the development to match what is actually the product that's going to be constructed there. So I mean, it's not uncommon, I mean, a lot of mixed-use areas that I've had, I mean, it's not uncommon to have 12, 15 different revised preliminary plats or administrative subdivisions and amendments to mixed-use development agreements because you don't know. I mean, you're just hoping to get close. And then when you actually have a deal, that's when you actually do the revised preliminary plats, the amendment to the mixed-use development agreements. I mean, no one could predict that in the beginning, that this would be the layout that would match what is being proposed. I mean, it would be next to impossible, right?
You know, I'm aware that revisions are common. And I've often wondered, well, why don't you get it right the first time? Something like that. But you've explained that.
If you had a magic ball, Mr. Mom Guard, I would love to see it.
For very practical reasons, you're not trying to get it completely right the first time.
There's no way you can do that. I mean, we had no idea that they would come in with this, like the missing middle type product, which is very much in demand in the City of Papillion. You can't guess these things. I mean, you never could. Otherwise, if you had a crystal ball.
Well, I'm hoping this is a reaction to what you just said, that missing middle, quote, people, developers are now reacting to that.
No, I don't think that that's true. I think what, here's the thing, and we talked about this on the last project, if you remember, when we had the plat extension last couple of weeks ago. The reason why we didn't go forward with that final plat and wanted to do the extension is because we were still trying to determine what the market is. Not that there isn't a market. There's a great market in Papillion. But what you don't want to do is file and record a final plat because now you've set into stone the various rights away. You've set into stone all the boundary line easements that surround each and every lot by ordinance. And then when you go to replat that, all of a sudden, now you've got vacation right-of-way problems of the streets that were formerly dedicated with the prior final plat. And you have boundary line easements that you have to release and then put down with a new plat. I mean, it becomes incredibly complicated. So you don't want to go too fast. You actually want to make sure that what you're doing makes sense with what you actually are going to have. are going to have and develop.
Okay, well, I'll tell you that I didn't like this, what you had on the preliminary, on the original plat for this area anyhow.
Yeah.
So I praise you for changing it because this is a whole lot better.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Ingberg.
First of all, I'm thrilled that you have some design elements in this with some variety, particularly middle-missing pieces. Quick question, though. The affordable housing portion, would you say that, design-wise, is that similar to what middle-missing calls cottages, that type of housing?
It's similar in, in scale, I think, in terms of, you know, this idea of increased walkability, what, you know, looks like a more residential scale than a large multifamily building, which we do have at the perimeter, but we break that down as we move into the neighborhood.
Well, I was thinking more, when I say cottage as defined and middle-missing housing, I mean, is, I'm talking kind of square footage and that type of thing, maybe not so much identical design.
Yeah, see, are you talking about kind of tiny or semi-tiny homes? Is that...
Well, you know, maybe, you know, a thousand square feet, I've seen them like that, you know, but I don't know if there's a market for that, but, or if it's something you can incorporate and still make the numbers work, but I'm just curious what your affordable housing looks like.
Yeah, well, yeah, I see what you're saying. So for these row homes, for example, I think the for-sale ones are somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 square feet, maybe 1,300. And I think that's typical for, as well as the kind of rental affordable...
So these aren't, these aren't separate housing units? They're incorporated as a cluster, so to speak?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so if you're looking at this image for, oh, that one doesn't show up very well. But if you're looking at this one, you know, this three-story kind of visual unit is one unit. That's three stories, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,300 square feet.
Okay. And some of those would be, could be privately purchased, and some will be rental units.
That's right.
Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fanslow.
I think it's great. I like the mix of housing and the product that you're bringing. Can you talk to me about how you will assure the affordability? Talk about that program a little bit, maybe, and so everybody else can hear and...
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for asking. And just one comment I wanted to make is the affordable housing and the market-rate housing really is indistinguishable. So the purpose of why we comprehensively designed this neighborhood altogether is the idea is that you'll drive down the street and you won't know which is which necessarily. We would love to get closer to an ideal, which is unit-by-unit differentiation. We can't quite get there with the different programs we use, but, but we get close. So the key affordable housing program that we're using are low-income housing tax credits.
Okay.
So they're administered by the state of Nebraska, and so when we talk about, like, this project here...
I want to interrupt you just real quick because it is a big education. The low-income tax credits generally have only been available in census tracts that are identified as low to moderate income. Papillion doesn't have any of those, which is one of the reasons we've never been able to solve the affordable housing issue because we haven't had the tools that HUD provides and the financing. He mentioned at the beginning that designation of a difficult-to-develop area. That's a specific designation of HUD then that allows those tax credits to be used in there in kind of a higher-income area, and they get a higher basis to work from. And the difficult-to-develop area that basically is in Papillion is the only one in the entire state of Nebraska, and I think that goes to the point of this has been a difficult area to develop from an affordable housing perspective. So those federal programs are able to come here for the very first time.
And Lytech can be pretty competitive, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So these, we were very fortunate. I think there were 11 applications this year, and there were three of those 11 were funded in urban areas between Lincoln and Omaha, and we received two of those awards here. So out of, you know, I don't know, eight million dollars worth of requests, they funded a million for this project, which is challenging but is also, you know, a testament to us fitting within how the state really is wanting to see some development happen in non-traditional areas. So it's going to be, so with low-income housing tax credits, we commit to hitting a certain affordability targets. In this case, there's a certain set aside at 40% median income, a certain set aside at 60% median income, and we make a really long-term commitment around affordability. So these will stay affordable for 45 years, and we've, very, there's a lot of nuances to this program, but we've kind of waived the ability to, for us to ever take them out of the program. And then we work together with both the state of Nebraska's allocating agency, as well as we'll have a partner who buys these tax credits. So when we say it's tax credits funded, what that means is we're allocated a certain amount of tax credits so long as we operate these compliantly and serve the population that we say we're going to serve. And that's what our tax credit, instead of having a traditional equity investor, we have an investor who's buying these tax credits upfront. So the tax credits get generated over time so long as we say, we serve who we say we're going to serve, and then they're not as worried about the stream of income from the project because they get their return back from these tax credits over time. So the good thing about that is that we have a lot of oversight, long-term oversight into the project. So they're coming out and doing inspections, the state of Nebraska is coming out and doing inspections and making sure that we're operating these and it continues to look good and continues to maintain kind of the integrity of, you know, both the building, the building is maintained, and we maintain the service that we're intending to maintain.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the education for everybody and just to go through that, and I know you've done some projects around town, so I appreciate you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Stube.
Question with regard, you mentioned kind of a collaboration with Habitat for Humanity. Can you talk a little bit about how they're going to be involved in this particular project?
Absolutely. So we have 45 for-sale, we have 50 for-sale units. Forty-five of them have some income program associated with them. Fifteen of them, we are going to develop in collaboration with Sarpy County Housing Foundation. We receive $750,000 for down payment assistance. And then 30 of them Habitat is going to purchase from us, and they're going to develop commensurate with their program. So they typically target kind of an 80% median income family. That's a really hard target for us. In order to hit that sort of a target, you kind of have to identify these families early, take them through the credit and buying education process. So they're going to manage that whole aspect and then, and then simply purchase the lots and develop them with our, basically with the consistent plans that we've created. So they'll be using our plans, them develop, and then them identify the tenants. Alongside that, we'll be working with the Sarpy County Housing Foundation to identify 15 other families, but that's kind of the nature of the program.
Mr. Ingberg.
When you talk about the financing part, I'm really familiar with Omaha's front porch program.
Oh, great.
So this is basically the same thing. I mean, incorporating the same guidelines that HUD has.
Well, so the front porch is kind of a flexible community loan program is how I think of it. There's probably a number of ways to think about it. They are providing us acquisition financing, sort of a second acquisition loan to go alongside our principal loan to acquire the entirety of the site. So they've said, hey, I think we have a $1.4 million commitment, so they're going to help us buy sort of the entire landscape, and then we'll sell it into these different projects. And sort of the idea was that we would do this exactly what we're bringing forward was what we pitched up to them with and what they awarded us for, yeah.
Appreciate it. Any other proponents, any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Next is item F1, Resolution R230173, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a revised preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 7, Section 12, Township 13 North Range, 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of Seventy Second Street and Capehart Road. The applicant's Jean Graves Oakleaf. Open the public hearing. Proponents?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Again, this is going to, goes back to our conversation with the rezoning, public hearing. This revised preliminary plat that we have, there we go, is really, again, to accommodate this particular site plan, as you see there. So the various lots here for the, you know, for-sale types, you'll notice that's why they're smaller in dimensions, and then, of course, you have the retirement and the various mixed-use commercial retail lots on the outside. So this really is a revised preliminary plat to allow for this particular development that you see here on the site plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. We'll take all the comments from the previous one and carry them over.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaines.
So I have a few questions. I don't know who wants to answer them, but I didn't want to ask them during the public meeting because I didn't, it may turn into discussion, but how many total units are in this development?
Now you're going to test my eyes.
How many, how many single...
Six hundred, I think, six hundred, yeah.
So there's 600, and how many of those units are the government subsidized units that they were talking about?
Yeah, that's probably, you want to, you can get up here and answer, yeah.
And 200 will be part of the tax credit program. And then an additional 45 will be for-sale with some sort of a supportive for-sale model. And then when we, when we're talking about the single-family homes, are any of those attached to any of these tax credit programs? No, they're different funding programs, not the tax credit program. Okay. And then what's the average price of, just ballpark of these single-family homes that are going in there? Our hope is that the, what we're seeing is that right now, cost of construction for a single-family home, one of these typologies, will be around, the sales price around 300, and then with the subordinated mortgage, the sort of effective sales price to the family will be around 250,000. So they'll have to sort of cover the mortgage of what they would have thought would have been around 250. Habitat's model, I think, will be lower, but... Okay, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, you keep saying government, I'm assuming you're talking federal government?
It's federal tax credit program is the, is the program. It's technically not government...
Under HUD?
These are very specific, it is not under HUD. It's under the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority.
Okay. Are there rules that somebody establishes that have to be followed?
Yes.
And is that by the federal government that sets those rules?
That is by the federal government, yeah.
And so the government, the federal government's then going to have a say in who gets to move into these particular units here in Papillion, Nebraska, and who doesn't?
They get a say in what incomes those individuals...
Are they going to weigh such things as whether they're LGBTQ or anything like that? Does that come into play?
They won't have any knowledge about any sort of protected class nature. They'll just, we will verify that this individual makes less than 60% median income.
So strictly income-driven?
Strictly income-driven. They will not be, there are no other overlays on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230173?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Glover. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nes.
Motion passes. Thank you. F2, Resolution R230174, a resolution to accept a dedication of street right-of-way for one tract of South 66th Street, south of Capehart Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230174?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nes.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Seen no comments from the floor? Council comments? Just from the last couple of weeks, Ms. Powers met Governor Pillen for a tour of Amazon, so I think the World Herald did an article on that, so it's good to start giving them some appreciation of the economic engine that the Sarpy County is and what we contribute to the entire state of Nebraska. We also had the United Cities Meeting, legislature starting to do some work, a lot of interim hearings are occurring. I don't think we really have a sense yet of what's going to be on the legislature other than property tax, sales tax, those are always going to be the, probably the big topics. I think there's a lot of negotiations going on between a lot of interest groups of what that's going to look like, so we're trying to learn that, but I don't think we know them much yet. But again, just another reminder, if there are things you specifically care about that you want us to work on or carry the water, let us know. We probably can't get it into this next session, but it's not too early to work on those ideas and get them ready for the, for the following session. Had a ribbon cutting today for Casa de Bonbon, translates, I think, the House of Sweetness, so check that out. A reminder again of the Veterans Day ceremony Saturday at 11 o'clock, assuming the weather's good, it's going to be at Veterans Park. One of the nice things about it, I hope you've been to Veterans Park and you saw the new Purple Heart Memorial. There is a national program through the military order, the Purple Heart, the official national organization, and they've had a program since about the mid-'70s called the Purple Heart Trail. They're trying to get a network through the United States of significant places that honor Purple Heart. There are not many places in Nebraska that are on that trail. Places of significance, bridges, memorials, highways, cities can all be on that trail. We've been doing a lot of work, and we did get word that the city of Papillion, we're actually going to have two places on the purple, on the official National Purple Heart Trail because of that installation. Veterans Park itself will be dedicated as a Purple Heart Memorial, and we'll read that proclamation Saturday for that designation. And then because of everything going on in Papillion, veterans-related, they're actually going to declare us a Purple Heart City. So when you come in on the highway at the population sign, it'll say Papillion, Purple Heart City, and that's a national designation. I think there's probably only one or two other cities in Nebraska that have that. So, Mr. Gowen, thanks for all of your work on that. So we'll do that on Veterans Day during the ceremony. Couple of ribbon cuttings coming up on the 14th at noon is Chirpy's Play Cafe, and on the 21st, Supertarget is having their remodeling, a ribbon cutting around that. Again, the reminder of Winter Wonderland on the 25th from 4:00 to 8:00, and then City Hall will be closed Friday in recognition of Veterans Day. I think that's all of the major reminders. We do have a closed session tonight, so is there a motion to go into closed? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Stube.
Thank you. When you mentioned the legislature, reminded me that it's probably been a few weeks back that we had a gentleman here that talked about red light running. We talked about the potential for a change in state law, and I think there was going to be some discussion about that related to citations, so if you could maybe just update us on that.
Yeah, thanks for that. After he came and spoke, we did have Chief Widded sit down with him. I think Mr. Klefter might have, some from administration, tried to fully understand what his issue and concern was, and is there anything we could do from a local level? And really, I think what he's looking for is some state legislation changes, probably more on the compliance side, fines and that type of thing. And so staff did make an introduction to Senator Archer's office, and so they can be working through this, through the Senator's office, so thank you for that. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss potential litigation?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? It was a motion, not a second. Any council discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Sunday.
I've often thought we go into closed session and it's hurry, 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 and I know that some people come here to these meetings and watch the whole meeting and maybe want to have a word with one council person or another before they go home.
We'll take a brief break.
Maybe a recess of five minutes or so?
Yeah, so once we go into closed session, we'll take about five minutes to gather in there.
Sure.
Very good point. Thank you. Please vote.
Seven eight zero nes.
Motion passes. I'll state for the record, the purpose for the closed session is only to discuss potential litigation. Closed session will include the mayor, the city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, city clerk, city attorney, assistant city attorney, human resources director, and we'll gather in about five minutes.